We are meeting today, as usual, in the Higgins Middle School library. Today is August 20th, 2019, and we are starting the meeting at 7:09. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD school committee's recording secretary and is being broadcast on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start off, if we could just take a moment, rise for a moment of silence. And I know we have some special guests today, a very distinguished group of our very best students. Ms. Murtagh, did you want to introduce?
Yes, I have the honor and privilege to have the Project 351 ambassadors here with us this evening with Mr. Busey. If they could join the mayor to say the pledge of allegiance right up here in front.
Ready on three. One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have to take a picture before we go. Our ambassadors, Project 351, has been a great source of pride for our community for a number of years, and these are the last five of classes of our ambassadors.
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Okay. Geez, time goes by pretty quickly. But I'm very lucky, I know all of you, and each of you have been a great credit to our school system, to our city, and I can't wait to see everything that you all accomplish in the future. I'm very proud of all of you. I know all of our school committee members, school administration, and our city are greatly proud of all of you, and will always be here for you as we move forward. But as I said, you've been a great source of pride, the work that you've done collecting clothes, I think almost every year, if not every year, we are like the top state, top school, top city in the whole state, 351 being the number of cities and towns in Massachusetts. So I wanted to thank each of you. It's wonderful to have you here today. Ms. Murtagh, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add, and start with them?
Do we just have to...
Oh, we want to go to the superintendent's report. No objection if we go out of order slightly?
No objections.
All right, this is the summer, they need to be out and enjoying themselves.
Well, I'm so excited to have all of you here tonight, so thank you for being here and being with us. I'd like to, we have a special presentation by Mr. Busey tonight. If I could ask him to come forth and present something here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ms. Murtagh. I think most PBD residents are aware of Tom Gould's generosity and graciousness when it comes to supporting our community. For the past seven years, Tom's support of Higgins Middle School, and more specifically Project 351, has been unwavering. Starting in 2013, when Katie Wallace and Matt Tomato first asked Tom for help with what would become PBD's annual Best in the State Spring Clothing Drive, Tom has been front and center, giving time, offering advice, facilitating connections, and of course, donating ice cream to ensure the success of every Project 351 service project. Every year, one of the first things ambassadors do is reach out to Tom. He never says no, he never even says maybe. His answer is always yes, followed most of the time by, "What else can I do?" Ten of our past and present Project 351 ambassadors have joined me tonight, and we all wanted to take an opportunity to let Tom know how grateful we are for his support and his friendship. So I would ask those of them behind me, Katie Wallace, Ava Marata, Mike Tansey, Jack Woods, Cassidy Butt, Sidney O'Donnell, Colby Brown, Emma Bloom, Michaela Alperen, and Carson Brown, to join me to present this token of our appreciation to Tom, and I'm going to actually ask Sidney to read it aloud for us.
I got to do it. I had to do it, I wouldn't dress up.
This is presented with sincere gratitude to Tom Gould. We are humbled by your kindness, compassion, and generosity in support of PBD's Project 351 ambassadors.
I still say that we're blessed to have...
Mr. Gould, yeah, speak right into that.
Thank you. I'm very honored, thank you so much, everyone. Mr. Busey, it's all because of you and our friendship, and as much as, you know, we get sugar-coated every time you need something, you know where to go, so... But thank you, Mayor, thank you, Carl. You duped me. And I appreciate it. Thank you so much, I'm very humbled.
You are not easy to trick, but we were able to do that today. But truthfully, and I appreciate you recognizing Mr. Busey, who's an outstanding principal, we're very fortunate to have him, but really, it's about you. And those words that were read by Sidney, when I think of you, it's kindness, it's compassion, generosity, and we're very lucky in the city to have you, and our students are very lucky. You do amazing things across the city, not just as an elected official, but in so many other capacities, and I'm very lucky, as I've said many times, to call you my friend. All of us here are your friends, and we're very fortunate to have you as a part of our community, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. I'm done.
Let's take a picture together.
Hey, everybody, if you want to, we'll get together and talk. Right in the middle, bud, right in the middle.
We're going to go online.
Oh, my God, right? Go that way. And like, ready? Are we in? Everybody in?
One, two, three. I'll do one more.
Wait, not three, I'm going to say eight.
One, two, three.
Ice cream.
Excellent.
Check these out.
How are you? Good.
First off, any other questions? President Tana.
What happened to you, my friend?
Oh, I was, uh...
The fans went with you. When I say with the students, I was...
There we go, that's what you used to come up with.
And then I pooped him, and he's on my...
That's what I say, you've got to come up with a good story. That's a good one.
With the teachers, I say, y'all's an education officer this summer, and some guy stole his purse, and I went right after him.
Good. I like how you think.
Truth matters.
No, it's go with the original story.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
No strategic plan tonight, Tom.
No strategic plan tonight.
All right, unfortunately, we have to go back to the regular agenda here and take care of some important business, so let's go to approval of minutes. We do have regular school committee meetings to approve from June, excuse me, from June 25th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, thank you for the motion for approval by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
President.
Yes.
Mr. Amiga?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Approval of bills? Mrs. Coppender, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 4261. Oh, I didn't check the date. Sorry, hold on. Dated, are they both August 20th? Sorry, hold on.
August 20th?
Both of them, dated August 20th, 2019, in the amount of $240,743.85, subject to audit.
Second. Great, thank you, Mrs. Coppender, for the motion for approval of warrant A, number 4261, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please, on warrant A.
Yes.
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 Like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 4260, dated August 20th, 2019, in the amount of $174,943.11, subject to audit.
Second. Terrific, thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Coppender for approval of warrant B, number 4260, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please, on warrant B.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Amiga?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis? Yes.
Yes.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will go to continued business. We have a number of items. First, Mrs. Dunn, any new information on the MSBA Higgins project as we are closing that out?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, the status for the project is still going through the closeout process, and we will continue to work on several, I've said this before, we're still working on several small things that will go towards improvements here at the building, as well as working on the landscaping. I am very happy to report that the drainage system is working amazingly well, and even though sometimes people may be concerned that it looks overgrown, it was designed that way for a reason, and it is really, truly helping with flood mitigation in the city.
Great. And again, I wanted to thank you, Mrs. Dunn, you know, we do have this beautiful building, it's a couple of years old now, but there's still a number of items that continue to, we continue to work on. You've been heading that up for us for a while now, and I appreciate your work. It's made a difference in the look of the building and in the operation, and you know, a lot of times, people don't realize there's still a lot going on here, a lot of work being done, and upgrades, and thank you.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
Okay, next, continued business, Mrs. Coppender. Well, actually, I know this is under you, but I don't think this is exactly your item. Change in school start times? We'll just hold that in committee?
Yeah, I mean, I know it keeps coming up, I honestly, you know, would, it's under my name, what the committee wants to do with it, what was the cost to it, I'm not really sure, Mr. Chairman, how you want to proceed with this.
I know Mr. Huckman has talked about this issue, let's just hold it till the next meeting, and then maybe make some decisions as to where we go with it.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Dunn, you've asked fiscal year 2020 budget updates. Any questions or any information we wanted to bring forward?
Just a couple of follow-up questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can hang on one second. On the ELL program, if there is any update on that as far as the staffing that you needed or anything new with the ELL program?
Currently, we were concerned about middle school moving up to high school because we have 21 students moving from the middle school to the high school. We have hired a foreign language ELL department head, and she will be teaching three of those classes, so it's a dual role, and she will be covering those classes, so at this time, that position is covering what we need up at the high school.
Very good, thank you. Also, at the high school on the foreign language offerings, what are all of the languages still being offered this year?
Okay, so we have Portuguese, Spanish, Italian, French. We are doing the online with German Level 3 and 4. They are going to pilot it for us to see, we asked the students, we called the families, and there are students that are going to be taking that with a virtual high school. The only one that's not being offered, and we reached out to those families for Latin 3 and 4, and there was no interest, they liked their schedule as is, for Latin, so the only one that will not be is Latin. Everything else is being serviced.
Thank you. And that's it for my questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Our next item, Welch School feasibility appropriation, an important item. Mrs. Dunn, whenever you are ready, I know you have been working on this diligently along with our superintendent and team, wanted to turn it over to you for the update, and I know we need to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we need to do tonight is to take a vote and request that the city council, through the mayor's approval, seek funding for the feasibility study for the Welch School project. And working with the MSBA, we've learned there are, each time we've done a project, they, of course, are improving their procedures too. Feasibility study is not just one document. What these funds will go toward are hiring an OPM, an owner's project manager, hiring a design team, which is your architect and those accompanying staff, conducting a feasibility study, and then conducting a schematic design report. All of that work is done so that the city can make a determination of what they want to do as far as the repairs at the Welch School, and it's so that MSBA can also understand what needs to be done and what the potential costs are. So it's a very good partnership. This is a really big step. We will hopefully make this vote, and that the city council will make this vote, and then that information will be relayed to MSBA, and then at that point, they will have a meeting in October. At that time is when we will find out if we are invited into the next step of this process, which would be the design and schematic, I'm sorry, the feasibility study and design process. It's not designing the school, it's designing the repairs and giving a cost analysis. So there's a lot of work that has already gone in. There's a small group working right now with the mayor, having meetings on a monthly basis, preparing for these steps, and then we will be having bigger meetings with additional members of the Welch School Building Committee, at which time, people will then be talking about all of the different pieces and the moving parts of this project. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, if anyone has any, and if not, then I would be prepared to make a motion seeking this funding.
Yeah, please, Mrs. Dunn, read the motion.
Okay. This is a motion to request funding for the appropriation resolved, that the school committee requests the city council of the city of PBD to appropriate the amount of $1,200,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of a feasibility study to determine the need and cost for potential renovation, modernization, repair, upgrades, construction, reconstruction, and/or modernization of the William A. Welch Elementary School located at 50 Swansgate Avenue, PBD, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of PBD may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the City of PBD Welch Elementary School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the school committee requests that the city council authorize the city treasurer with the approval of the mayor to borrow said amount under and pursuant Mass. General Law Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The school committee recognizes that the city of PBD acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any costs the city of PBD incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city of PBD, and that the amount of borrowed, I'm sorry, the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the city of PBD and the MSBA, and that this vote be adopted as read, so moved. Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Coppender. Any questions? We'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Coppender? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Amiga?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis? Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, and go ahead.
And just so everyone knows, this has also been submitted to the city council for their receipt on Thursday, and what will happen is, the city council has their own language for that vote, they'll receive it on Thursday, they'll assign it to their finance subcommittee, and then it will go before the full city council. So our record of tonight's vote is going to be submitted to them as well for their records.
Great. Very well done, Mrs. Dunn, good report. Just to add to that, I wanted to mention, we are targeting, you may have touched on this, we are targeting the MSBA's October meeting. That's their first meeting of the year, and that's why we're moving forward with the vote today, school city council shortly thereafter in September. And I just did want to mention, we're asking for $1.2 million. When we did the new middle school here, we got reimbursed 54.76 percent, I believe the number was, just under 55 percent reimbursement from the state, from the MSBA. So the $1.2 million, should we go forward with the project, which we're moving towards, there'd be reimbursement from the MSBA for a large amount of those costs, so just wanted to mention that, and looking forward to this, this is an important project for the Welch School and the Welch School community, really, the whole city. And we're trying to move as quickly as we can, and so far, we're ahead of the target dates that the MSBA has set for us, so Mrs. Dunn is our chair, as she was on the Higgins, so thank you for your work.
You're welcome. It's really, it really is a pleasure.
Great. Okay, next item, continued business is the pilot attendance policy. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you, I think, does everyone have a copy? I do. Okay. Prior to this meeting, the Quali and Steadards Subcommittee met. After the attendance pilot policy had been presented back in June to the school committee, it was referred to the policy subcommittee for basically what's an amendment, and what we did was, we prepared a one sheet, the Cliff Notes of the attendance policy. This is to help the parents. The attendance policy is very detailed, there's a lot of language in there, a lot of different categories, and what we did was, we consolidated down some very quick things that parents would need to know if their child is going to be absent or late to school. So this one front sheet is the only difference to be attached to the current attendance pilot policy for inclusion in the student and parent guardian handbook. So on the recommendation of the subcommittee, I would like to make a motion that we approve the additional amendment to the attendance pilot policy, and that it be placed in the student handbook for a pilot project of this year, so moved.
Second. Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion by her, seconded by Mr. Olympia. On that motion, Mrs. Coppender?
Thank you. Just the term that it's a pilot program, when will the revisit be? I would think at the end of the year.
So you want to say when we would revisit this policy?
I would probably do mid-year and then end of year. We'll probably do both.
We'll do mid and then end? Okay, so if we can get that in for just a date, just to add to the agendas for...
Probably after the new year.
January?
After the new year, yeah.
After the new year? Yeah, so in January, we'll revisit it? Yeah. Okay.
Just to let you know, we'll give you an update.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
That makes sense, thank you, Mrs. Coppender. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Amiga?
Yes. Mr. Arnotis? Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Before we go to the last item, I want to see if there's any objection. Mr. Buah is here, I know he's a very busy man, didn't know if, I know there's a couple of items that we have for him, didn't know if there's no objection, if you wouldn't mind going to him, so...
No objection.
Get home to his family, Mr. Buah.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Hello.
So what I am looking to, looking for is to renew some of the middle school waivers that we've done in the past, in particular for the sports of field hockey, boys and girls swim, and softball. Every year, they need to be reapplied through the MIAA, so I'm looking for approval on that, as well as our two co-ops are both up for renewal as well. That'd be the girls' ice hockey co-op with Lynnfield and North Reading, as well as the wrestling co-op with Saugus, that was a one-year pilot, so we're looking to kind of extend that as well, was very successful last year.
Great, thank you, Mr. Buah. Any questions? I know Ms. Murtagh is recommending that we do individual votes for each. Any questions on any of these requests? Mrs. Dunn?
Just one, I'm sorry, I couldn't keep up with you. On the middle school waivers, it's field hockey, swimming, and...
Softball.
Boys and girls softball.
Just softball, just girls softball, yep.
Softball, that's at the middle school, okay. Thank you.
Great, oh, please, go ahead.
Can I ask another question? I've brought this up before, I know we're, I think it's wonderful, I'll speak on this right now, I think it's wonderful to build up those sports programs, especially allowing the middle school students to participate, because it really will help the programs grow. On the, I'm not familiar with where the field hockey practice, do they practice at the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
They do.
And I know with the swim team, they practice at the Y.
Correct.
And speaking as a parent, the experience with the swim team was, one of the difficulties of growing that team has been getting swimmers to the YMCA, and I inquired before if there was room on a bus at the end of the day, if it was a bus that was heading up Lynnfield Street or down Lynnfield Street, if we could look into what the interest would be for students on that team being able to just be dropped at the YMCA or the neighborhood right before it, if that could be looked into. Field hockey too, if they could be, you know, just go to the high school on whatever bus circles that way, because I think it's difficult for parents to transport the kids.
I just have something, because I was going to bring that in a September meeting, because I also had students come talk to me about, the basketball team practices here, and they have difficulty, that's a winter sport though, getting here, so I'm thinking maybe a one-way bus pass. So I'm getting prices for you, so I'll bring that forth and see interest, and I'll work with Mr. Buah on that as well.
Yeah, because I know the solution used to be, oh, well, have one of the older kids drive, and when you've got, you know, when it's your baby, and you're not used to having someone able to drive, it's very, very difficult to let them ride with an upperclassman. Once they get into, after a while, it does change your perspective, but at that very beginning, which is when you want kids to get into these sports and really be able to grow, that's where the transportation piece becomes a key, because it's not on their current campus. So thank you, that would really be good to look into, and might, it might...
of growing that team has been getting swimmers to the YMCA. And I inquired before if there was room on a bus at the end of the day, if it was a bus that was heading up Linfield Street or down Linfield Street, if we could look into what the interest would be for students on that team being able to just be dropped at the YMCA or the neighborhood right before it, if that could be looked into. Field hockey too, if they could be, you know, just go to the high school on whatever bus circles that way, because I think it's difficult for parents to transport the kids.
I just have something, because I was going to bring that in a September meeting, because I also had students come talk to me about, the basketball team practices here, and they have difficulty, that's a winter sport though, getting here, so I'm thinking maybe a one-way bus pass. So I'm getting prices for you, so I'll bring that forth and see interest, and I'll work with Mr. Buah on that as well.
Yeah, because I know the solution used to be, oh, well, have one of the older kids drive, and when you've got, you know, when it's your baby, and you're not used to having someone able to drive, it's very, very difficult to let them ride with an upperclassman. Once they get into, after a while, it does change your perspective. But at that very beginning, which is when you want kids to get into these sports and really be able to grow, that's where the transportation piece becomes a key, because it's not on their current campus. So thank you, that would really be good to look into, and might, it might be very helpful for you.
Great.
Great, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. So again, Mr. Buah, it's swimming, softball, and-
Field hockey.
Field hockey. All right, so why don't we go, individual motions as recommended by Ms. Murtagh.
You want individual sport, or individual for middle school waiver and individual for co-op? Or each sport?
I think for the MIAA, I would do individual sport. Middle school.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the middle school waiver for field hockey. Do you need anything more than that? For field hockey, okay.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of the middle school waiver for field hockey, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Caput?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes. So I'd like to make a motion to approve a middle school waiver.
Do you need it separated for boys and girls, or can I do both? For the boys and girls swim?
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the middle school waiver for softball.
Second. Thank you, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of the middle school waiver for girls' softball, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Caput?
Yes.
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 Like to make a motion to approve girls' hockey co-op with Linfield and North Reading.
Second. Heard the motion for approval of the girls' ice hockey co-op program to include Linfield and North Reading, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
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 Like to make a motion to approve wrestling co-op with Saugus High School.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of the hockey co-op for-
Wrestling.
Excuse me, wrestling co-op with Saugus, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call?
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Buah.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to go back to the regular agenda, continued business, we have superintendent's Under our school policy, the school committee shall review the superintendent's self-evaluation in a public session prior to the commencement of the next school year, and shall quote-unquote "agree with" or quote-unquote "disagree with" the conclusions contained in the superintendent's report. Where the committee disagrees with the superintendent's report, it shall reference specific events, facts, or action in support of its conclusion. Once we complete this review, the committee chair, myself, shall, in consultation with the superintendent, compile a final evaluation report containing the superintendent's original report and a fair summary of the comments and conclusions of the school committee, which shall be placed in the superintendent's personnel file. To the extent required by law, that evaluation shall be a public document. You have been presented with Ms. Murtagh's self-evaluation. There are four standards to be reviewed, and again, it would be a "agree with" or "disagree with" her assessment, her public, her self-evaluation. Standard one is instructional leadership, standard two is management and operations, standard three is family and community engagement, and standard four, professional culture. Under each of those standards, it's broken into subparts. We'll go right now into the instructional leadership, standard one. Is there any questions at this time?
Are we, are we doing it right now?
Yes.
I left mine in my car.
Okay. Well, we'll review it, and then if you have any questions, we'll, curriculum instruction, so let's start with standard one, instructional leadership. Curriculum instruction. The superintendent has given herself a self-evaluation of proficient. It ranges from unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. Ms. Murtagh has listed proficient for this item, curriculum indicator, based on standards-based unit design, lesson development support. Listed under proficient is the following, provides support and assistance for administrators to learn and employ effective strategies for ensuring that educators and educated teams design standards-based units with measurable outcomes and challenging tasks required, requiring higher-order thinking, frequently monitors and assesses progress, providing feedback as necessary. Under lesson development support, supports administrators to learn and establish effective strategies for ensuring that educators develop well-structured lessons with challenging, measurable objectives, and appropriate student engagement strategies, pacing, sequence, activities, materials, technologies, and grouping. That is, under standard one, instructional leadership, item A. Any thoughts at this time? Mrs. Dunn?
I agree with the superintendent's self-evaluation as far as proficient, and I know that because of Ms. Murtagh's background with curriculum and instruction, that she has been carrying that forward into all of the schools, especially with coming into the buildings and walking through, doing, doing the observations, and I think you call them walk around Wednesdays?
Walk through Wednesdays.
Walk through Wednesdays, and including her administrators as well in that process in each of the schools. I think that it's been a very good thing to do because it shows a real, true focus and a very good organization on making sure that this is, this is being carried out on a weekly basis, and it's gone on all year. And I think that that's been very important because it's a top-down example of the, the value and the seriousness of providing curriculum and encouraging people to learn more about what they are teaching.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, well said. So I think what I'd like to ask is if we could, a member of the committee could make a motion to, again, either agree with Superintendent Murtagh's self-evaluation, or disagree with Superintendent's self-evaluation, Superintendent Murtagh's self-evaluation. Mr. O'Meara?
Thank you, through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to agree with Ms. Murtagh's evaluate, self-evaluation on instruction.
Second.
Thank you. Heard the motion by Mr. O'Meara, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Terrific, thank you. There are a number here, and I do think we need to go through each individually. I will run through them, read proficient, what's been noted by Superintendent Murtagh. Next one, under instructional leadership, item B, instruction indicator. Proficient is what is noted with the following language, while observing principal practice and artifacts ensures that principals identify a variety of effective teaching strategies and practices when they observe, practice, and review unit plans. Sets and models high expectations for the quality of content, student effort, and student work district-wide, and supports administrators to uphold these expectations consistently. While observing principal practice ensures that principals look for and identify a variety of teaching strategies and practices that are effective with diverse learners when they observe prac, when they observe practices and review unit plans. Any motion at this time or comments? Mrs. Dunn?
I would like to make a motion to, that, to agree with the superintendent's self-evaluation standard of proficient for item B under instructional leadership, so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Thank you for the motion, seconded by Mr. O'Meara. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Great, thank you. Next one, under instructional leadership, is item C, assessment indicator. Again, listed as proficient with the following language, supports administrator teams to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments, including common interim assessments that are aligned across grade levels and subject areas. Provides the resources for planning time and effective support for administrator teams to review assessment data and identify appropriate interventions and adjustments to practice. Monitors administrators' efforts and successes in this area. I'd open that up to the committee. Mr. O'Meara?
I'll make a motion to agree with the superintendent's self-evaluation of proficient for indicator C.
Great. Thank you, Mr. O'Meara, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote on item C, assessment indicator.
Mr. Caput?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Great, next item is D, under instructional leadership, and that is evaluation indicator. Again, listed as proficient with the following language, supports administrators and administrator teams to develop and attain meaningful, actionable, and measurable professional practice, student learning, and where-appropriate district-school improvement goals. Typically makes at least three unannounced visits to each school to observe principal practice every year. I think you're way beyond that, Ms. Murtagh. And provides targeted constructive feedback to all administrators, acknowledges effective practice, and provides redirection and support for those whose practice is less than proficient. Exercises sound and reliable judgment in assigning ratings for performance, goal attainment, and impact on school learning, student learning, and ensures that administrators understand why they receive their ratings. I would open that up to the committee. Mrs. Dunn?
I would like to make a motion that, to agree with the superintendent's self-evaluation status of proficient on indicator D.
Second. Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, yes?
And just on the motion, all the comments I made at the beginning, I guess I kind of lumped everything in together from one. It goes for all of them.
No, I think he was very well-stated, and I think it does apply. Motion for approval made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Okay, next item, under standard one, instructional leadership, is item E, data-informed decision-making indicator. Again, proficient with the following language, guides administrators and supports them in identifying a range of appropriate data sources and effectively analyze the data for decision-making purposes. Uses data to accurately assess school and district strengths and areas for improvement to inform the creation of focused, measurable district goals. Provides support to principals in their efforts to create focused, measurable school goals. Open that up to the committee. Mrs. Dunn?
Like to make a motion to agree with the superintendent's evaluation of proficient on standard E.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for the motion, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Great, thank you. We'll go to standard two, management and operations. First item, item A, is environment indicator. Again, Ms. Murtagh has listed proficient with the following language, develops systems, plans, procedures, and routines for administrators to implement that generally ensure orderly and efficient student entry, dismissal, meals, class transition, assemblies, and recess. Develops strategies and procedures for the effective supervision and support of custodial, clerical, food services, and other staff effectively so that campus is clean, attractive, welcoming, and safe. Supports administrative teams in developing systems and procedures for positive student behavior. Models high expectations for student behavior and provides appropriate training for administrators to uphold these expectations. I'd open that up. Mrs. Carpenter?
Like to make a motion to approve standard two A in proficient.
Terrific, thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Great, next item, standard two, item B, human resources management and development indicator. Again, proficient with the following language, lists the district's recruitment and hiring process, through it consistently identifies effective administrators and educators who share the district's mission. Develops district-wide induction support for new administrators and teachers, and/or faithfully implements the district's induction strategy. Organizes high-quality job-embedded professional development aligned with district goals, and supports the career growth of effective professional personnel. Open that up to the committee.
I'll make a motion to approve indicator two B for the proficient category.
Great, thank you, Mr. O'Meara. You've heard the motion, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, and if I can add, I've been very pleased with what I've learned about the induction program. The structure of it is very good, and I think it's, it's going to be very helpful, the way that it is. People, people know what they have to do as they go through the system for those first two or three years, and I think it's very, very good for everyone.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Next item is two C, scheduling and management information systems indicator. Again, listed as proficient, creates schedules, procedures, and related systems that maximize instructional time and minimize school day disruptions and distractions for school-level staff, including principal. Sets expectations for administrator team meetings and creates a schedule that provides sufficient meeting time for all team meetings. Prevents or deflects activities that interfere with administrator's ability to focus on the agenda during team time. Establishes norms for effective team behavior. Mr. Olympio?
I'd like to make a motion to, to, I agree with Ms. Murtagh's assessment of proficient under schedule and in information systems.
Great, thank you, Mr. Olympio, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
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 Great, next is two D, law, ethics, and policies indicator. Again, proficient, understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, and collective bargaining agreements. Provides the resources and support to ensure district-wide compliance. Reliably demonstrates sound judgment reflecting integrity and fairness. Develops a budget that aligns with the district's vision, mission, and goals. Allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district, school-level goals, and available resources. I'd open that up, Mr. O'Meara?
I'd like to make a motion on two D, law and ethics and policy indicator, as a proficient for Ms. Murtagh.
Second.
Thank you. Heard the motion by Mr. O'Meara, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, for approval of, or agreement with item two D. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next item is two E, fiscal systems indicator. Again, proficient, develops a budget that aligns with the school's vision, mission, and goals. Allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district, school-level goals, and available resources. Mr. O'Meara?
I'll make a motion to approve indicator two E for fiscal systems with the evaluation of proficient.
Great, you've heard the motion by Mr. O'Meara, seconded by Mr. O'Meara. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Caput?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Great, thank you. We'll go now to standard three, family and community engagement. Three A, engagement indicator. Again, proficient, provides resources and support for all personnel to use culturally sensitive practices to ensure that all families are welcome and can contribute to the district, classroom, school, and community's effectiveness. Establishes ongoing relationships with community organizations, community members, and businesses, engages them to increase their involvement to maximize community contributions for district Mrs. Dunn?
I'm actually thinking you exceed on that one. I know the superintendent said proficient, you are proficient on that, but the effort that you have put into outreach in the community is really so strong, and it's, it really is appreciated, so I'll agree with proficient, but a high proficient. Outstanding, I don't know-
You can disagree, sorry. What's the next level? We can vote how we-
Exemplary.
Exemplary.
Exemplary, really.
Change it, Mrs. Dunn. I'm sorry.
No, I really do think it's exemplary, because, Ms. Mertag, we really, we really should have enforced a rule in your contract about taking time, because you work so hard, and you're at the schools from five in the morning till midnight, and you go to so many community events, and you're there, I know you're there as a representative of the schools, and it really is making a great impact on our schools. And I think, I think it's exemplary.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Coppender beat Mr. Amico for second. Mr. Amico?
I thank you, Ms. Dunn, for doing that. On that motion, a great leader has to be visible, and a great leader has to be accessible, and you are both. You're probably the hardest-working employee in the city, and a lot of that goes to you reaching out to families and students all year long, so I just want to thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Well said, both of you. So, have a motion to disagree with Ms. Mertag, and grade her under three A as exemplary. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great. Item three B, sharing responsibility indicator. Again, proficient, provides resources and support to enable administrators and educators to identify each student's academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs, including students with disabilities and English learners. Sets clear expectations for and supports administrators to regularly engage families in supporting learning at school and home, including appropriate adaptation for students with disabilities or limited English proficiency. I'd open that up to the council committee. Mrs. Coppender?
I'd like to make a motion for standard three B on sharing responsibilities as proficient.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympio, on item three B. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great. Next item, three C, communication indicator. Again, proficient, sets clear expectations for and provides support to administrators to communicate regularly with families using two-way communication channels, including careful and prompt response to communications from families. Sets clear expectations for and provides support to administrators regarding culturally sensitive communications. Provides, nope, that's it. Open that up. Mr. Olympio?
I'd like to make a motion to approve superintendent's assessment of proficient under three C, communications.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Olympio, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great. And three D, family concerns. Again, proficient, provides support for administrators to reach out to families as concerns arise and works to reach equitable solutions in the best interests of students. Open that up. Mr. Amico?
I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendation superintendent's assessment on family concern support and proficient.
Second.
Great, thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great. Now go to the last standard of review, the standard four, professional culture. First item, commitment to high standards indicator. Again, proficient, fosters a shared commitment to high standards of teaching and learning for all administrators with high expectations for achievement for all. Plans and leads well-run and engaging administrator meetings that have clear purpose, focus on matters of consequence, and engage participants in a thoughtful and productive series of conversations and deliberations. Establishes clear norms for administrator team behavior. I'd open that up. Mr. On notice?
I'll make a motion to agree with the superintendent's self-evaluation of proficient for indicator four A, commitment to high standards.
Second.
Great, thank you, Mr. On notice, for the motion, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, next item is four B, cultural proficiency. Ms. Mertag has given herself a needs improvement. Takes pride in having a diverse administrator, faculty, and our student body, but some policies are not culturally sensitive, and/or provides limited resources for administrators to support the development of cultural proficiency. I'd open that up to the committee for review, discussion. Mrs. Dunn?
I will make a motion to agree with the superintendent's evaluation, self-evaluation on standard B as needs improvement. So moved, I'll have some comments after that.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. For discussion, Mrs. Dunn?
I can understand why you said needs improvement, and I think it's just because this is something that I know you're working towards trying to get a more diverse staff into this district, and that takes a lot of time and a lot of energy to do that. It's nothing that anyone could do overnight. So, there are all kinds of programs out there, and I know Ms. Mertag has been exploring those, recruitment, and things like that. You can see some changes coming, but it is something, I know, your first year, you wouldn't be able to do that overnight. You really wouldn't.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, next item, four C, communications. Proficient demonstrates strong interpersonal, written, and verbal communication skills.
I'd like to make a motion to, for standard four C, communications as proficient.
Second.
Great, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Item four D, continuous learning. Proficient leads all administrators and teams to reflect on the effectiveness of interactions with faculty and students. Ensures that administrators use data, research, and best practices to adapt practices to achieve improved results. Reflects on and improves personal practice, sets meaningful goals, and develops new approaches in order to improve efficiency in practice. I'd open that up to Mr. Olympio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ms. Mertag's assessment of proficient in standard four D, continuous learning.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympio, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, four E, shared vision. Ms. Mertag has given herself a needs improvement. Engages administrative staff, students, families, and community members in developing a vision focused on some aspects of student preparation for college, in career readiness, civic engagement, and community contributions. I'd open that up to the committee.
I will make a motion to agree with the superintendent's self-evaluation as needs improvement on the, on section four E.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Again, I think that this is one of those areas where it's something that is a work in progress. I know you're doing a strategic plan, that, you know, you've been working with everyone to pull everyone together on their school plans, and the groundwork needed to be put in place this year, so I can understand why you said that.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great, last item, four F, managing conflict. Proficient employs a non-confrontational approach for responding respectfully and appropriately to disagreement and dissent, using both as opportunities for learning. Models this practice with the administrator team. Consistently employs a variety of strategies to resolve conflicts in a constructive and respectful manner. Builds consensus within the school district community around critical school decisions employing a variety of strategies. Mr. On notice?
Motion to approve the superintendent's self-evaluation of proficient for indicator four F, managing conflict.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. On notice, for the motion, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you to the committee. Thank you, Ms. Mertag, for your evaluation, which I know is never easy, but I want to speak on my behalf and say that I think you've done a terrific job this year. Your first year, you were hit with a wide variety of very challenging budget items, situations, challenges, and you've rose to the occasion, and I think even better years are ahead for you, and thank you for your work this first year. As required under the policy, I will now consult with the superintendent, factor in your votes and your commentary, and prepare a final summary for the committee to review, which shall be placed in superintendent's personnel file. Okay? Thank you, committee. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open. Seeing no one, we will go to superintendent's report. Ms. Mertag?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for my evaluation, the self-evaluation piece, the first part of it. So, thank you. We're halfway down, which is great. We did the gratitude award, we talked about the middle school and high school waivers. What Dr. Lord and I would like to speak about now is the grant allocation, professional development, and NIESC. So, I'll have Dr. Lord talk about the grant allocation, and then I'll speak on that as well.
Very, I'm delighted to share with you, just, delighted to share with you, just a few hours ago, we got approval of our Title I grants, all four of them. Slightly more funding available in Title I, a little bit more in Title II, a little bit less in Title III, and a little bit more in Title IV, I believe, off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Yeah. It went up in Title I, it went.
Just slightly.
Yeah.
Slightly.
And it went down a little bit in Title II, it went up in Title III, and down in Title IV. Yep. Those are the four different ones for Title I.
It kind of evened out.
It evened off overall with about the same amount of allocations, and we just got it approved a few hours ago.
So, I just want to bring you up to date where we are with that, because we did have a budgetary concern there. We did put three ELL teachers into the Title I budget. We will, so we have good news and okay news. The good news is, is that we will have additional, all of, everything stayed except for, we have ten tutors instead of fifteen tutors. All of the people that are currently tutors will be receiving the letters back of welcome back to come back to the schools, and five people chose not to come back, so we have nobody to lay off or to not have jobs. So, it worked out to our benefit in that sense. So, we're welcoming back our Title I tutors, they'll be receiving a letter in the mail, and we have been allocated our funding, so all those positions are back up, and the three ELL teachers are in that grant. Thank you. And thank you for the hard work of Dr. Lord, too.
Sure, no problem.
Next is professional development. I want Dr. Lord to speak on the professional development of teachers, and then I'll briefly describe what we're doing as administrators.
So, for the teachers, we've been developing this for the last few months with a variety of speakers. They'll be coming in to do training in all the settings of tradition here. The Carroll Schools where all the elementary training will be going on, they're doing both days, a ninety-minute round robin with Dibble's Training for the kindergarten and first-grade teachers, they're doing curriculum writing, there's been some great curriculum writing this past year, we have all of our curriculum, K5 online, and the team that put curriculum together will be presenting by grade to each, all the first-grade teachers in the city, all the second-grade teachers and so forth, so they'll be learning about that. Principals have some time in there to spend with their teachers. That's for the elementary. The middle school has a social-emotional event, and also learning, collaborating better during the common planning time, collaboration, our speaker there. They have some cluster time as well. Mr. Buah is taking the phys ed teams off-campus for a while, they're going to be doing something at Brooksby Farm, something with ropes, I guess, something like that. Anyway, some activity, just to build some team with all the PE teachers, that should be fun. The high school is going to be focusing on NEASC and vaping and suicide prevention. So, the NEASC thing is into the next item, should I move right into that?
Yes, we'll move into NIESC. We will have our visit on September twenty-third to the twenty-fifth, we will put that out publicly. Dr. Michael Jettie will be coming to our district, and the teachers and the students have been preparing all year and before that as well. We're very excited about that, and Dr. Lord, if you have anything else to say.
Yeah, I've got to tell you, the PBD High School is about to be assessed by, you know, fifteen or sixteen accreditation team members on the 2011 standards for NEASC. It might be known to the community that the NEASC has revamped their protocols to the 2020 standards, which are starting next year. There's about a half a dozen schools in all New England that are looking at those 2020 standards. And the work of the high school over the last couple of years with the Vision of the Graduate speaks to the standards that have yet to be established for New England. I mean, PBD High is the point of the spear when it comes to this. I mean, they've done some incredible work with the Vision of the Graduate, they have rubrics for all seven indicators, and it really will help kids, regardless of the subject area that they're in, to learn a set of seven skills that they can use for the rest of their lives, being a team player, or an effective communicator, or a self-manager, artist-innovator. All of those are part of the Vision of the Graduate, and I'm delighted to say the high school is going to be very, very strong with respect to that component of a shared vision, a shared mission for the school. Anyway, that and the S visit, we'll have more to come later on. It does start on a Sunday, the twenty-second. The team arrives at the high school about ten in the morning, and they stay for a few hours for a little training, and then there's a big public event on Sunday about one o'clock on the twenty-second where people can come and look at that event. It's going to be a lot of fun, and hope that many people will show up in the community. Then they do some teacher interviews, they'll be interviewing the school committee on that day as well, and it's a good celebration of the good things going on at the school. And then, the next few days is shadowing students and visiting various teams, and they end up with a report on Wednesday evening, that there'll be a public report, that they'll share some initial findings, their commendations and recommendations for the future. It's a wonderful process, the team has done some extraordinary work, and I'm honored to be, you know, even, I'll act like a principal while I'm there, but I'm just honored to be part of that group. I mean, it does some extraordinary work, and I think you'll be very pleased with the report and the process that goes out, and I hope you all engage with it, should be all fun.
Thank you, Dr. Lord. And we will be sending you invites to those events, and it will become, we will put it on the newspaper and everything for families to know, and we will update you as we go. On August twenty-ninth, I would like to invite all of you, if you can come, it is our welcome back to all of our teachers in the district on August twenty-ninth. We have a great event, it's at eight AM, and it will only go till nine AM, but you're more than welcome to come and share in that event. The next thing on the agenda is the Welch School received a grant with your approval. It was a five thousand dollar grant from H&amp;B Fuller Company, and with your approval, we can accept that five thousand dollar grant, technology grant.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, for acceptance with gratitude. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 We were in receipt of, thank you, we were in receipt of another donation to the Brown School from Hemis Man Development Group of school supplies, so Principal King would like to thank them, and with your approval, we can accept those.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, all in favor, that's a vote to accept with gratitude.
So, I'm super excited about this, we got a very generous donation from Essex Tech, from Superintendent Riccio and Joseph St. Pierre of new tables and chairs, we're sprucing up the melting pot. So, we're super excited about that, and we're also getting some other tables, and that will be in next school committee, some conference tables and tables from a different company. So, we're sprucing up the high school a little bit with some donations. So, with your approval, I can accept those.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, all in favor, move, vote to accept.
Okay, thank you. The monthly attendance, student attendance is in your packet, and the hiring status report is in your packet. We're doing very well with hiring. I just want to touch base with the hiring process. We have hired, we laid off ten teachers, we have hired back nine of those ten teachers. teachers. We have hired back nine of those 10 teachers. They're still teaching in our district, and we're pleased about that. Um, and so I think we did very, very well. There was one position that I, that was not filled. Um, so very happy about that, and we're ready to start the new school year. Um, I just wanted to touch base, um, about the high school principal. As, uh, the public knows, we are looking for a new high school principal, a new educational leader at PBD High School, and, um, we had a wonderful team process, uh, and procedure. Um, and we have, the mayor and I are conducting public interviews, um, this Thursday night, August 22nd, beginning at 6:00 PM. The mayor and I will, will be asking the questions as the public listens and observes, um, the candidates. Um, so you're more than welcome to come. Again, that's 6:00 PM on August 22nd, uh, in the PBD Veterans Memorial High School auditorium.
If, if I could, Ms. Mertag, just to add on to that, um, I wanted to commend you. You put together a terrific committee, uh, to assess and evaluate what I thought was a terrific group of candidates. Uh, I wanted to recognize and thank Mr. Miko for being a member of that committee. Uh, we initially had 28 applicants, uh, interviewed 11, and the committee made up of administrators, uh, teachers, uh, students, parents. Um, it was really a, an excellent committee, um, and very well done by you and our Human Resources Director, Steve Farrell. Uh, I wanted to commend you for that. We have four excellent candidates that we're interviewing on Thursday night, and I think we're going to have a terrific leader for, uh, PBD Veterans Memorial High School. Uh, we're going to make a difficult decision, but I feel, uh, all four candidates are very strong, and, um, looking forward to getting to know them better on Thursday night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being on the committee as well. Thank you. None of these big committees or any of this work could be done without, without an amazing team. Um, so I, I thank them as well. Um, as we continue to go, I just want to give a little shout-out that our PBD Veterans Memorial High School first year student orientation is August 26th. Please, uh, please check your emails. Um, so August 26th is the orientation, beginning at 9:00 AM at the high school. Um, the next thing, oh, there's a Girl Scout project that I have to ask the committee. They, the Girl Scout project, they would like to put a recycle bin next to the trash cans on playgrounds at the elementary school. So it's something to think about. Um, I think I have to get your approval because it's something on playgrounds in schools, um, even if we pilot one. So they want a recycle bin, um, trash can, next to the trash can, a recycle bin next to the trash can. Um, and my whole thing is asking about, um, sustainability and who is, who is cleaning it out, and, um, it would be, it would be a joint effort between the Girl Scouts and, um, our custodial staff. So that's something I would like to ask, if we could even start off with one. They're trying to get their badge, and they're very excited about this project of, um, trying to keep, keep the playgrounds clean and also, uh, recycling.
Does it come with cookies?
I wish. I wish.
Girl Scout cookies, really?
Okay.
Sold.
Do you need a motion for that?
I, I need a motion, and, uh, if I could pilot a couple of schools, maybe?
Mrs. Dunn, did you have a comment?
I'd like to follow, like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent and to, to pilot that program, and, uh, I think it's a wonderful idea. So moved.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Coppin. Uh, we all in favor? It's a vote?
Excellent. Thank you. And I just am looking forward to a positive, productive school year. Uh, we are ready to go. Our first day of school for students is September 3rd. Um, and check your, um, mailboxes, elementary students, and Higgins and High School students, please check your, uh, Aspen portals for your teachers' in schedules starting next week.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you for that report, Ms. Mertag. All right, we'll go to written communications. We did have one communication from the MSBA regarding the South and West Elementary Schools. And unfortunately, we were notified that we did not qualify this year for funding under the accelerated repair program for new roofs at both the South and West. Um, the reason given was that we did not meet the age requirement, um, which was very surprising to us. So, uh, that is going to be a continuing concern that we have to address, um, and we'll be taking that up, I know, shortly, uh, to discuss that, uh, both of those buildings. Okay, um, subcommittee reports. Uh, education, we will hold. Finance Subcommittee, Mrs. Coppin, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Okay. School safety, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing to report.
Athletics and wellness, we will hold that. Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Quality and standards held a meeting this evening prior to the, uh, regular school committee meeting, and as you know, we presented our, um, our work on the attendance policy. Um, I will tell everyone that, uh, a special, uh, project has come up that, um, the NASC offers a service where they will provide a copy of their, I would call it the sample handbook, uh, I'm sorry, sample policy manual, and, um, I spoke with superintendent, and I also spoke with, uh, Ms. Ma- with, with Marge Macarelli. And Marge and I are going to work on this. We're going to go through and make sure that we update the policy manual. If there are policies that we know need to be updated, we'll be pulling those together, and if we notice any that need to be, um, that, that might be out of date or not used anymore, we're going to go through. It's going to be a bit of a long project, but we're going to do that so that when the Quality and Standards Subcommittee meets, we will be reviewing, uh, a document that has all of the policies that we need, and it will help us to update our own policy manual. They provide three levels of support, and this one seemed to be the best one to start off with, and, uh, I want to thank Mrs. Macarelli because she was all set to help.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay. Um, liaison, uh, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Liaison to parent and student advisory boards. Um, wait a minute. Yes. Mrs. Dunn?
We'll be scheduling the first parent advisory board meeting as soon as I can find out what is a, a good evening for everyone involved, our members, as well as the, uh, people from the various schools. So there should be a beginning meeting in September, but date not determined. Student advisory board, uh, two things on that. One is that there will be an additional training provided by NASC here in Division 1 for all student advisory board members throughout the district. It's open, it's open to any student advisory board member in the state, but we're trying to locate those in, um, very, you know, inconvenient areas so that the kids can, can go to those. Uh, date hasn't been set yet, but it's going to be in early fall because we thought that was a good time to start with the student advisory board members so that they can understand what their role and responsibilities will be going forward. So, um, when I get a date for that, I'll, I'll be letting you know, but it's, it's something exciting. They provided a training, um, uh, gosh, it's almost two years ago now, and our own Audrey, um, Student Advisory Representative attended that and was outstanding speaker at that. That's not a surprise. But, uh, she, she has spoken about how helpful that presentation was, so we're trying to bring it out throughout the whole state.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and grounds, Mr. Miko?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay. Special education, parent advisory board, still have you?
Nothing at this time.
City Council and Legislative Delegation, Mr. Anadonis?
Nothing.
I know there was one item that, um, I think we missed. Um, Ms. Mertag?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a big one. Um, I've been in negotiations, um, with your lead, uh, with Four Kids Only, our after, before and after-school program. Um, so what we have negotiated is, um, a 2% increase over the last three years, and then I will reevaluate at the end of this contract year. It's a three-year contract, uh, but they will give, be giving our school system $70,000. Um, plus we have the three, uh, 21st Century Grants, uh, that we're very fortunate to have. So, three-year contract, $70,000, um, and the contract has been given to you, uh, for approval to move forward.
Make a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Mertag. Uh, Ms. Coppin?
Like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the joint use of facilities between the PBD Public Schools and Four Kids Only After-School Program, September 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. Contract, that's before you.
Second. Great. Thank you, Ms. Coppin. You've heard the motion made, uh, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, vote please.
Coppin?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Anadonis?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, again, I wanted to invite both Ms. Mertag and I wanted to invite anybody, uh, that would like to join us, um, for the interviews for the PBD Veterans Memorial High School principal. Again, there this Thursday night at the auditorium, the PBD Veterans Memorial High School, beginning at 6:00. We'll be interviewing four candidates, uh, four excellent candidates, and, uh, if you're available to join us and would like to, please, uh, come, and, um, it'll be on PAT as well. Thank you, I wanted to mention that. It'll be on PAT live, uh, that evening as well. All right, uh, next meeting is September 10th, Tuesday night, again, here at the auditorium at the Higgins Middle School, beginning at 7:00 PM. Uh, thank you for a good meeting.
Thank you, everybody, and welcome back.